But good afternoon. Thanks, and welcome to the Fall Town Meeting. I thought, by way of introducing our speaker, who you all know, we would talk a little bit about what she's done since our last town meeting, and some of the awards that she's won since her last town meeting. So, you can go through all those. Trish, so Dr. Jackson took a trip to South Africa with a contingent, and in April, received an honorary degree from Stellenbosch University. Also in April, she was awarded the Joseph A. Burton Forum Award from the American Physical Society. And at the end of that month, there was a magazine in New York City that recognized her as one of the Education Power 50 in New York City and New York State. The National Association of Corporate Directors, the New Jersey chapter, recognized her with a Lifetime Achievement Award in Governance in May, and an honorary degree from the College of St. Rose, right here in the capital region. The Philanthropic Hall of Fame, from the United Way of the Greater Capital Region, had its inaugural class, and not only recognized Dr. Jackson, but also her spouse, Dr. Morris Washington. The Corporate Award was given in June from the Fund for Lake George, and the Bronze Beaver Award by the MIT Alumni Association. And the picture down on the bottom right is just her talking with some folks at Howard University as part of an ongoing program with the Medal of Science and Technology. Last, a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Jackson was awarded the Interface Legacy Award. It's the 50th anniversary of the Interface Program at MIT, and you can see some of the original people gathered with Dr. Jackson in the picture. And of course, a couple of weeks ago, we had our own celebration of 20 years of celebration of her leadership here at Rensselaer. And started with the, I wish my colleague, the VP of HR, was here, because it started with "The Big Bang" by Curtis Powell, and moved on from that. And you can see Dr. Jackson posing with the students that were lucky enough to perform with Josh Groban and others that attended those events, and including some that gave an award from the students to Dr. Jackson. So, without any further ado, just to, that was just enough to embarrass you, Dr. Jackson. Please join me in welcoming to the stage our 18th president, the Honorable Dr. Shirley Ann Jackson.
You know, when I was growing up, if someone did that, and I am a bit embarrassed, I'd say, "I'm gonna get you for that." But I won't say that. But thank you, John. I appreciate it. So, welcome to our 2019 Fall Town Meeting. And I want to also extend a special welcome to everyone watching remotely. Now, I have a lot of good news to report. However, before I do, let me introduce you to some members of institute leadership. I hope we can bring up a few lights. Of course, you've met our Vice President for Information Services and Technology and Chief Information Officer, John Kolb, of the Class of '79. The acquired lady who runs my office, so if you ever want me to do anything, she's the one, Jen Brock. Our Vice President for Institute Advancement, Mr. Greg Easton. The man who takes care of our beautiful campus, our Vice President for Administration, Mr. Claude Rounds. Ms. Pamela Smith, Associate Vice President for Strategic Communications and External Relations. Now, you've heard it. He says he doesn't have much wind left, but the wind beneath my wings. My husband, Dr. Morris Washington, is also a professor, Special Assistant to the President for Strategic Initiatives, and former VP for Research, Professor Jonathan Dorek. The Executive Director of Health and Wellness and Head of our Health Center, Ha Ha Ha, Dr. Fran Lawrence. Les Lawrence. You know, I knew the former president of Rutgers, and his name was Fran. Turns out, so I'm getting seen now. Our Vice President for Student Life, Mr. Peter Kynworski. Acting Dean of the Lowly School of Management, Professor Chanaka Idorosenga. The Dean of the School of Architecture, Mr. Evan Douglas, Professor Douglas. Dean of the School of Humanities, Arts, and Social Sciences, Professor Mary Simone. Senior Associate Vice President for Research, Professor Robert Hull. Dean of the School of Science, Professor Kurt Brenneman. Our Vice President for Finance and Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Barbara Howell. Vice Provost and Dean of Undergraduate Education, Professor Keith Mu Young. He's a member of the Classes of 1992 and 1995. Associate Vice President and Director of Athletics, Dr. Lee McElroy. Vice President for Enrollment, Mr. Jonathan Wexler. Dean of the School of Engineering, Professor Shaker Gardi. And our General Counsel and Secretary of the Institute, Mr. Craig Cook. And so, we're all delighted to be here this evening. This, well, this afternoon. Now, this fall, I had the great pleasure, as you've heard, of celebrating 20 years in office as President of Rensselaer with many members of the extended Rensselaer community, many of whom are now old friends. Now, currently, the median tenure of a sitting college president is about five years. So, I've had an extraordinary opportunity with my leadership team and with all of you to accomplish a great deal at Rensselaer and for Rensselaer. And we also have been celebrating another anniversary as well. 50 years since the astronauts of Apollo 11 landed on the moon. And a great deal of the credit for this remarkable scientific and engineering accomplishment belongs to one of our own, George Lowe, of the Classes of 1948 and '50. After a tragic fire in the Apollo 1 Command Module cost the lives of three astronauts, Mr. Lowe was asked in a shakeup to oversee the spacecraft design and to serve, in effect, as Operations Manager of the Apollo program. He brought to the endeavor both a remarkable mastery of detail and an ability to inspire the very best from his team. Now, George Lowe left NASA in 1976 to assume the presidency of his alma mater, of Rensselaer, and proved to be a strong leader here as well. But after he died in office in 1984, the institute was somewhat adrift, running through five leaders in 14 years. By the time I was invited to assume the presidency, Rensselaer was not functioning as a full research university, although we have always offered graduate degrees, but was instead largely focused on undergraduate education. And we weren't always doing the job there that we wanted to do, and with select research strengths. Now, in the long run, however, we do believe that one cannot educate talented students at the leading edge of their fields without a research enterprise that itself pushes outwards the boundaries of knowledge. The Troy Campus was in decline physically, with a great deal of deferred maintenance and a dearth of new platforms for research and education. The student experience was not what it should have been for graduate students as well as undergraduates. So, the Rensselaer Board of Trustees was seeking a change agent, and I was privileged to be their choice. And so, the first thing I did was to steer the development of the Rensselaer plan, to guide us. And together, we have come a very long way in education, in research, and in student life. And so, the transformation of Rensselaer truly deserves to be recognized and celebrated. And so, I thank all of you. And so, I ask you to give yourselves a hand. Now, at the very beginning of my tenure, we put a stake in the ground in what was a relatively new field for Rensselaer, biotechnology and the life sciences. And we created a magnificent platform in our Center for Biotechnology and Interdisciplinary Studies. Our Curtis R. Primm Experimental Media and Performing Arts Center capitalized on an existing Rensselaer strength in the electronic arts, but pushed us way beyond that to make Rensselaer utterly unique. Our Center for Computational Innovations gives us the most powerful tools for research in an array of fields while exploring the frontiers of high-performance computing itself. We have attracted world-class faculty in part by creating constellations that allow star faculty to work with their peers, junior faculty, and students across disciplines, but around the singular research focus. In all, we have hired nearly 400 new tenured and tenure-track faculty across all five schools, including 13 new tenured and tenure-track faculty who started this fall. Now, today, the full-time faculty of Rensselaer numbers nearly 500, including tenured and tenure-track faculty, as well as lecturers and senior lecturers. As a result of all that we've done, we have tripled our research funding, even in a difficult climate for federal-sponsored research funding. We have developed important new partnerships in research as well, including with IBM and with the Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. Today, our faculty are addressing crucial global challenges, such as antibiotic resistance, diseases such as Alzheimer's and cancer, our food, water, and energy security and climate change, national global security and cybersecurity, and the need for a sustainable built environment and sustainable materials. And all of this work is changing the world. We also have substantially increased our academic offerings with an eye to new fields emerging at the intersections of disciplines. Over the past 20 years, we have established 24 new degree programs in all, including Bachelor of Science degrees in Games and Simulation Arts and Sciences, in Information Technology and Web Science, and in Music. And there's a vast array across all of our disciplines. And there are a number of new PhD programs and Master's programs as well. We also have radically improved student life, offering both new supports and new opportunities, creating our award-winning Office of the First Year Experience, and then expanding that with clustered learning advocacy and support for students or class. We have improved the physical conditions in which Rensselaer students live and learn, undertaking many overdue renovations, beginning with the freshman residencies, and have created new residences for both undergraduates and graduate students, including the Howard and Blitman P.E. Class of 50, Residence Commons, the Polytechnic Apartments, and City Station. We also have created new facilities to encourage the development of the whole student, mind, body, and spirit. And with the opening of the Mueller Center in 2000, we added 32,000 square feet of space for fitness, wellness, and recreation. In 2007, we began construction on the $92 million East Campus Athletic Village, and added to the campus a new stadium for football, lacrosse, and soccer, and a new basketball for, new arena for basketball and other indoor sports. We recently dedicated the Carl Steffen Baseball Stadium as well. In all, we have invested over $800 million in our campus. That's just the physical campus. And nearly $1.3 billion in the Rensselaer plan overall. As a result of these and other changes, demand for Rensselaer education has soared. The number of applications we received for our freshman class of 2023 was 3.5 times the number we received in 2000. And academically, this is the highest-achieving class we ever have enrolled, with average SAT scores of a record 1411. And that's up nearly 130 points since 2000. This also is one of the most diverse classes we have welcomed, with record numbers of underrepresented minorities, and with great geographic diversity, encompassing first-year students from 42 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, and from 23 countries outside the United States. Nearly 1/3 of the class are women. And these students come to Rensselaer to enjoy top-ranked programs. U.S. News continues to rank Rensselaer among the top 50 national universities, and 41st among graduate schools in engineering, and 29th among undergraduate engineering. And we are tied with four other schools for that. We also have many individual programs that lead in the nation, something we are communicating to potential students, parents, and employers in multiple media. College Choice ranks our IT and Web Science Program the best undergraduate IT program in the United States. The TFE Times ranks our Masters of Business Analytics third in the nation, and we're starting a Bachelor of Science in Business Analytics. And our Masters of Management Program, fourth in the nation. College Factual ranks our undergraduate physics program sixth in the nation. Best Schools ranks Games and Simulation Arts and Sciences sixth in the nation. And Game Designing ranks our program seventh in the world. Indeed, the talent emanating from Rensselaer has seeded a thriving cluster of gaming studios in the region, which are helping to transform downtown Troy. New York State has designated this area a Center of Excellence in Digital Game Development, and that means us. Design Intelligence ranks our School of Architecture 14th on its list of outstanding schools, even though it's one of the smallest. And Dean Evan Douglas and Professor David Bell among the most admired educators in the field of architecture. We continue to innovate in our teaching and learning, in our pedagogy, with our first-in-the-nation data dexterity requirement and a new minor in Data Science and Engineering. In research, we have begun a very exciting partnership with IBM, the Artificial Intelligence Research Collaboration, or the AIRC. And the AIRC is intended to move forward the science of artificial intelligence itself, as well as its applications across all fields of research and education at Rensselaer in all five of our schools. And together with our institute-wide research and academic programs in data science and data analytics, the AIRC will form the foundation of a major institute thrust in data, artificial intelligence, and high-performance computation, or DIC, as we call it, which will be structured and launched in this academic year. It will lead to a major new research division at Rensselaer, as well as new academic programs, and a significant enhancement of our already magnificent computational ecosystem that will constitute the most advanced university-based testbed for artificial intelligence and deep learning in the world. We recently were awarded a $30 million grant from the SUNY Research Foundation to purchase a new supercomputer center in support of a larger New York State AI Hardware Center. Consequently, we shortly will have a data-centric, AI-enabled, high-performance computation system with, on the order of 10 petaflops, of high-performance computing capability. And this will be one of the top high-performance computing systems in the U.S. and in the world. Stay tuned. It will support research in AI itself and in fields across a broad intellectual front. Now, this summer, our first full class of rising juniors remained on campus for the first full summer semester of the Arch, enabling them to leave campus for a pre-professional experience or intellectual adventure of a semester's length or more during the traditional academic year. The Arch has six essential intentional elements. First, an acceleration of immersion in both the academic and professional worlds. Second, structured academic advising, career counseling, and leadership development beginning in the freshman year. Third, unique academic and co-curricular summer experiences. Fourth, re clustering of the junior year cohort across disciplines. Fifth, more focused and meaningful engagement with the faculty. And sixth, an opportunity for students to engage in self-discovery, leading to increased intellectual agility, multicultural sophistication, and a global perspective. Now, it's fair to say that Rensselaer graduates already are in high demand with leading employers, with the military, governmental and non-governmental organizations, and the best graduate schools. The Arch experience is only going to increase that demand. We continue to invest in clustered learning advocacy and support for students, class. And as we think about how we want to take care of our students and provide for their well-being and safety, one area of concern for us and for many other universities has been Greek life. Now, the problems demanding action include behavioral issues, such as sexual misconduct, substance abuse, and hazing, as well as health and safety issues at some Greek houses, ranging from cleanliness to fire prevention and building code compliance. There also are financial issues for some houses, resulting from falling membership, which has threatened to make some Greek chapters unsustainable. Now, at the same time, there are Rensselaer Greek chapters that are performing well and are exemplars for those that are not. And when our 166-year-old Greek system works as it should and supports academic achievement, community service, and leadership development, it imbues young men and women with great strength of character. And I will tell you, I just learned this morning that at Penn State, which has had its share of challenges, there was a death of a pre-collegiate student at a house associated with one of its fraternities off-campus. And that student died from alcohol overdose. So, these are serious issues. And our focus is on keeping, again, our students safe, keeping them well, and launching them into their careers for great lives. So, last year, I appointed a Greek Life Review Committee to formally assess the current state of Greek life at Rensselaer and to consider the best path forward. The review committee included the Greek Life Task Force, led by Vice President and Chief Information Officer, John Kolb, of the Class of 1979, which, after considerable community input, delivered excellent recommendations, which we have begun to implement. To actualize those recommendations, a Greek Life Initiative's Implementation Steering Committee was established this past July, with membership consisting of students, faculty, and staff. The committee met throughout the summer and already has accomplished a great deal, including more strongly incorporating the Greek life commons within our class system, establishing a single-student judicial system with respect to violations of institute rules, and shifting fraternity and sorority recruitment to the spring semester so that freshmen have time to get their sea legs before making a decision about membership in a Greek chapter. Now, this fall, the committee's priorities include a focus on financial sustainability and on the occupancy of Greek houses, which is, of course, connected to financial stability. The committee is examining improving chapter financial viability through house residency requirements and through non-resident fees so that those members who do not live in a house nonetheless contribute to house upkeep and operations. Now, our fraternity and sorority leaders also have expressed the desire to join forces as a community. And towards that end, we are establishing a fraternity and sorority Greek Commons Fund into which all fraternity and sorority members will contribute. And any fraternity or sorority will be able to request a grant from that fund in support of a project to improve the living environment it offers to its members. And I will tell you that the Chair of the Board of Trustees, beyond a commitment he already made to the Greek system, is making a contribution to that fund. In addition, I, in the Office of the President, am making a contribution to that fund. Further, I personally am making a contribution to that fund and our Vice President for Student Life, Peter Kynworski, is making a contribution to that fund to launch this and get it off the ground. Additional priorities for the Implementation Committee include the need to reexamine leadership progression for our Greek chapters, as well as for other student organizations. The traditional practice of selecting a slate of officers to serve in their junior year for a full calendar year obviously no longer can work quite the way it worked in the past now that juniors are engaged in Arch-away experiences. One possibility is a multi-year progression to leadership in which students can shift into and out of acting and advising roles, or in which the away semester becomes a developmental step on the road to full-time leadership for students upon their return to campus. But the discussion continues. As I'm sure that everyone in this theater is aware, on August 21st, we had a storm of such intensity that it overwhelmed the drainage infrastructure of both the city of Troy and the campus. Sage Avenue and Federal Street experienced significant damage. The landscaping here on the sides of the steps at Impact was washed out. Fortunately, not the building, because of how it's built. But overall, 20 buildings on the campus experienced flooding or minor roof leaks. There was significant flooding at the lower levels of the Union, in the Mueller Fitness Center, and in the basement of the Alumni Sports and Recreation Center, as well as in two student residences, the Colony Apartments and the Rousseau Residence Hall at the Stackwick Apartments, from which over 100 students had to be relocated. The new tech terrace near Congress Street happened to be available and was selected for the relocation of the Rousseau students, keeping that residential cluster together. And the Colony students were moved to the Polytech Apartments on Congress Street. Now, fortunately, the city of Troy responded quickly, and the Sage Avenue repairs started at 7:00 a.m. the morning after the storm. Unfortunately, the repairs required are extensive and ongoing still, although they are making good progress. But our water system in Troy is over 200 years old. Now, in our own housing, some restoration and repairs are completed. Others are still in progress. But to minimize disruption to relocated students, our athletes in particular, they will not be required to return to their residence halls until the beginning of the next semester. And naturally, we are engaged in a comprehensive assessment of ways to mitigate and address future flooding, and we've already begun to do that. Now, turning to broader institute matters, our recent financial returns reflect our continued prudent financial management, strong student demand, and overall growth. We had a 3% net increase in net assets with a fiscal year 2019 endowment return in line with expectations, a long-term debt reduction, and it's gone down more, of $15 million, including a principal repayment in conjunction with the refinancing of a portion of our debt. And as a result, the endowment substantially exceeds long-term debt, continuing the successful crossover I committed the institute to in 2017 and achieved in 2018, ahead of schedule. We also had the strongest external operating result in over 20 years of nearly $33 million, based on strong revenue growth of nearly 6%. Now, ongoing expense management efforts limited expense growth to under 4%. So, we had a positive cash flow from operations of nearly $40 million. But to put us on an even stronger foundation for the future... But to put us on an even stronger foundation for the future, as you all know, we are in the midst of our billion-dollar capital campaign, transformative campaign for global change. The pillars of that campaign, as I've said before, are first, eliminating the gap between student financial need and the scholarships and fellowships we are able to give. Secondly, endowing more professorships to attract and retain the best academic talent and to expand our tenured and tenure-track faculty in critical areas of research and teaching. And third, of course, upgrading and expanding our campuses, particularly this one, technologically and physically to accommodate our growth, including expanding the Johnson Engineering Center and with targeted fundraising, building a new Center for Science and completing Phase 2 of the East Campus Athletic Village. So as we approach the 200th anniversary of the founding of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, which happens in 2024, we are positioning ourselves for an even brighter future with the goal of enabling even more Rensselaer people to change the world, which is our legacy. So thank you for your attention. And now I would be delighted to answer any questions. Thank you very much. So we have a microphone available, so if anyone has any questions. So I took your breath away, huh? Okay. I'm about to drop the mic. This is your big chance. Thank you.
So in April, I talked to you about certain concerns I had with the Arch, specifically not being able to find classes.
Yes.
So yesterday, Dr. Konworski sent out an email saying that those problems, you're working on fixing those problems right now.
We are.
So why is it taking this long, is my question?
Well, I think there are several issues. One has to do with the sequencing of courses, the staffing of courses, ascertaining what courses exactly students need and how to fold them in to the cycle, given that we now run on a three-semester sequence. But let me ask our Vice Provost and Dean of Undergraduate Education to flesh that out a little more for you.
So the message that you got, we have taken in the student input, taken a look at all of the various survey datas that we did for Class of the Arch 2019, and we are applying that to Arch 2020. And so, for example, the deans are working together to come up with the best schedule possible whereby we reduce the impact on every student in terms of having scheduling conflicts, because that was one of the big challenges with the Summer 19 schedule. And then what we're going to do in the future is we're working together with deans to make sure that we eliminate those scheduling conflicts. I've also asked the deans to strategically select additional courses that they think are in the best interest of our students. And then we're also having your hubs go through and take a look at where everyone is on their, in their degree progress so that we make a robust enough schedule so that the students can take and have a seamless movement through their curricular structure.
That's true.
That's true.
But we were, at that point, beginning to lay out the overall schedule for the first summer. There were a number of things that we had to anticipate and deal with. And when you have as many moving parts relative to the number of students and getting students to register on time and in a timely way for the summer semester, then we make projections about what courses will be needed. I think we will get better and are getting better as we go along with making that. And so, you know, it's easy to sit and say, "Well, you told me this, you know, a year ago. Why didn't you fix it like that?" And maybe you can help us develop the algorithm with the people in it that will help us do that. But we're taking your concerns very seriously. And I think people will already see a major difference this upcoming summer. So thank you for the question. Please.
Hi there. Would you ever consider making the Arch optional if the majority of students expressed that they wanted that?
No.
Why not?
Because there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, the pedagogical intent, the opportunity it offers for students to develop themselves professionally. Many of our employers that we have been talking to are quite excited about it and believe that it is essential in terms of helping students develop and position themselves to be more competitive in many regards. In addition, it gives us the opportunity to have students have more focused and intense interactions with faculty. And so, once one makes this kind of move and the Board of Trustees is enthusiastically behind it and they've approved it. And so, it's not something it's, you know, when we lay out a course curriculum or a syllabus, it's not one that's based on a vote. We always try to take students' input in terms of the delivery of courses, but the actual requirements and how we structure the academic calendar is something that is the responsibility of the university. And it's one, as I said, that we thought about and looked at and did the pilots for over a number of years. So we're going to continue on this path for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please. I think she had her hand up first, and then you'll come to you.
Thank you. So I'm a student here. And on October 15th, there was an incident on campus that involved a large Troy PD presence pursuing a fugitive on foot. At 9:00 p.m., friends who were near the Mueller Center, Union, and DCC messaged a group chat I'm part of and warned us to stay away from the area. Had I not gotten that message, I would have crossed campus through the bridge to get to the library for studying. PubSafe issued a two-sentence alert an hour and 36 minutes later. And it stated, "At this time, there is no continued risk to the RPI community as a result of the incident, and no further information was given from the school that day or since." Given the recent uptick in campus shootings across the country, why did PubSafe not issue any warning to shelter in place as soon as they were aware of something happening on campus? And furthermore, what will you do to improve relations with the Troy Police Department so you're in the know about possible situations in the future?
So thank you for your question. Let me let Vadim Thomas, who's our Associate Vice President and Director of Public Safety and Emergency Management, respond to it, because that question came up during the family weekend as well. Vadim, use the microphone.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I don't think I need the mic. I think you probably hear my voice.
No, no, use it anyway.
The alert that was issued was not issued an hour and 35 minutes later. It was actually issued approximately 45 minutes later. But we had no idea of the operation that was taking place in another part of Troy regarding some people that were going to be getting arrested based on some other things that were taking place around the campus. We had no idea that there was going to be a pursuit through our campus or the arrest was going to take place. There was no need to shelter in place because the pursuit goes over in approximately one minute. The person was taken into custody and taken away off the campus. We're not going to issue an alert unless we know the facts, unless we know what exactly took place, because we don't want to put wrong facts out there and create additional panic. So it was after we spoke to the police department that we immediately then put out the alert notifying that the situation was over and was safe. In terms of developing additional relationships with the Troy Police Department, we have good relationships with Troy Police Department. But Troy Police Department is an agency that gets involved in conducting tactical operations and they're under no obligation to let us know anything that they're going to do. They let us know out of courtesy, out of professionalism, but they are under no obligation to let us know, especially if it initially doesn't concern the campus. And this operation did not concern the campus. It started out many, many blocks away, but unfortunately led through our campus and wound up where it did. Does that answer your question? No?
Well, I think the real message is that the, as far as I understand, the incident unfolded so quickly that there wasn't time to really issue a beforehand alert. We actually have had, over the years, a couple of incidents where if we've had more pre-warning, we've told people that. Relative to active shooters, we both discuss this a lot and do a number of exercises with federal, state, and local law enforcement in terms of response and what we will do. We also try to put out the alerts that we do to have students and others here be more mindful of their surroundings. And we ask you to do that. And I would ask you personally to use the shuttles as much as you can and the Safe Ride program. I think I understand your point about the sort of closing the loop relative to telling you more after the fact. And we can, and we'll do better with that. So thank you. Please. Oh, the gentleman in the red shirt first.
Thank you. Historically, Rensselaer has ranked one of the worst in the nation for free speech rights, including recently an open letter by the Foundation for Individual Rights in Education concerning recent handbook changes. Does the institute have a plan to address this moving forward?
I think I'm going to turn to our General Counsel to respond to this.
So do you have a particular concern? What is your concern?
If you look at the 2017 Save the Union protest, there were a lot of concerns about potential judicial inquiries that were brought against members who were identified to be part of the protest, as well as standing--
You said potential, didn't you? Not real.
People were asked--
They were asked some questions, as I recall. But as far as I recall, and I don't know if our Dean of Students is here, there were no judicial sanctions issued to any student.
There's as well the longstanding requirement to file an application to hold a protest, which is--
Correct. And that's for the safety of the campus. But let me let the General Counsel--
So let me just address the most recent update to our policy, which I believe was the letter. And by the way, I don't know that any of us in the administration have actually heard from any students about this, frankly, or heard concerns, and we shared it some time ago with the students. But it actually addresses two issues. One is outside groups and coming onto campus and conducting solicitation and handing out materials. And it involves what, how, the procedure for student groups to do the same. You know, we start with the fundamental that our campus is here for our students, right? And for many decades, the Rensselaer Union, which has, I don't know, over 200 student clubs, has had a very workable and simple policy, which is if a student club wants to engage in solicitation, put up a booth or whatever at the Rensselaer Union, they have to do two things. First, they have to be a Rensselaer-recognized club that follows the rules that were established for that club. And second, they have to get clearance from the facility, from the staff at the union to do so. We've actually had that same, essentially that same practice for the rest of the campus, not just at the Rensselaer Union. But a couple of years ago, it came to our attention, and I think it was even in a town forum like this, that the rules were not as clear for the rest of the campus. So we actually put in place rules in the handbook very consistent with what the union's been doing for many years, which is to say the same thing, that if you want to engage in the solicitation, handing out materials, you need to be a student-recognized group, right? We've had, for example, I'll give you an example. I had a local fast-food restaurant want to come onto campus and hand out coupons and things. And maybe some students would love that, but, you know, we have a contract with a dining service. And there are things that are inconsistent with what obligations we have. And you can talk about all kinds of different groups who would love to come onto our campus, whether it's a political group or a religious group. Some groups who, we've had who didn't meet the standards for getting a recognition because they had policies or discriminatory practices, and they were not allowed to be student-organized. You know, would they get to come on campus and hand out materials? No, I think it's a reasonable policy that in order to solicit or provide information on our campus, you need to be a student-recognized group. And of course, it's a standard and frankly, appropriate practice to get clearance from the facility operator, the manager of the facility, to do that in front of any particular facility. There's no intent for censorship. The intent is to manage our campus for our students by these kind of policies, again, consistent with what the Rensselaer Union has had in place for decades.
Also, I just want to make one comment. You'd speak about free speech. And part of the reason I have these town meetings is to have anyone from the Rensselaer community raise any issue that they want to raise, as you've just done. And so if we, or I, really were looking to suppress free speech, we wouldn't hold an open forum like this. I think these things are important, to clarify issues, to address concerns and worries that people have. And we want to talk to the young lady who raised the question about, you know, criminals running through the campus and how we can strengthen that. Years ago, there was a university publication, a student publication. It was called Statler and Waldorf. And that publication got increasingly strident. And one year, it had on its cover a picture of me. And the title of the cover was Brown Sugar. If you know anything about race relations and how African-American women have been treated historically in this country, you would know that that's extremely both threatening and denigrating. But the publication went on until the students themselves got a little tired of it and until they started attacking female members of the campus more broadly. So there's a long history here. And I often tell the cabinet that, you know, you come into the fifth act of a 10-act play. And, you know, the play still is obviously unfolding, and we want to learn as we go forward. But it also means there are acts that have occurred before, and there are reasons for the things we do having to do with the safety and security and the fairness on the campus. And so, we don't, you know, we take a fairly light hand until unless people get to a point where outside groups really want to come in and/or there's hate speech or things that are discriminatory. And we're not going to support that on this campus. This is a very diverse campus. And we want everybody to feel safe here in all regards. And that includes people of different political views. And I have a cabinet. I don't ask them what their political perspectives are because we're all here to work on behalf of the university as a whole. And as long as everybody's pulling in that direction, I don't care what they do in the political frame. And so I think that has to be very clear. And then during that time about Save the Union, I think it's important that we kind of tell the whole truth. Sure, the Dean of Students spoke with some students, but there were never any judicial sanctions issued to students, even though there had been a kind of a mass action. And so-- And so we have the right to ask people questions and to find out what's at the root of something. But as far as our taking a heavy hand with students, I don't think the record would support that. Are there other questions? Please. Oh, I think this young lady had her hand first, and then we'll come to you.
In your 20 years of leading RPI, you have had many accomplishments, but all successes come with mistakes, and I think student leaders here can learn from your experiences. Were there any mistakes you have made in your decisions for RPI that stand out to you? And if so, what were they, and how did you solve them? Thank you.
Well, I think we've always, and I've always learned through the years, how much one has to try to reach out and communicate and to be more open in that way, and that's something that I think I've evolved to over the years. I tend to be a kind of a reticent person, more than most people think, and I'm not one that, you know, wears everything on my sleeve and tell you every, you know, story in my life, but I think people do want to know a little more about me as a person. And as far as any big decisions, I tend to be a fast mover, but I think, you know, one also learns about how do you try to do things within the flow of what the university is. But in terms of, you know, a fundamental decision that we've made, because we spend a lot of time studying and researching and benchmarking and discussing, and the cabinet will tell you, we discuss things for a very long time. You know, when we make the decision, then, you know, we tend to move ahead with it. But thank you for the question. That's a great question. Thank you.
When I was a freshman in spring 2018, we did a lockdown drill for the entire school for the event of like an active shooter, maybe something similar to the incident we had on campus a few weeks ago. Since then, obviously, we've had two freshman classes come in that have not received a drill like that, so I was wondering if, or why we did not continue those drills and if we will see them again in the future.
So is that a suggestion you're making to us?
It was more a question, I thought, like-
Well, no, I think we should take it as a suggestion. So, we'll do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's, there's a gentleman up here. Let's get people who haven't had a chance to talk. In the white shirt, and then up there.
All right. So, at the last town hall, I asked you, what is RPI doing for LGBTQ students? And I was told, well, you can meet with Dr. Konworski afterwards. And me and the current head of RPI met with Dr. Konworski, and he took down our suggestions. And then it kind of dropped off the face of the earth. I sent six or so emails asking about, hey, the point's brought up, what's happening with that? Are there new resources being allocated? Are there improvements being made? And I didn't receive a response, so I'd like to ask the same question again. What is RPI doing specifically to support LGBTQ students in terms of resources and additional aid?
Well, since Peter was the one you wrote to, let me let him respond first.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the question, and I think anytime a student asks, and I know we have a lot of dialogue with students, we want to make sure that you know we're always willing to meet. In terms of the specifics, I think there are a number of things, and we talk about the diversity on campus and being an inclusive community, and there are things that each of our departments, and, you know, we've taken the notes that we took from that meeting. I've since met with, there's an LGBT task force, and we've met with other students. So, I guess what I would say is we continue to work on these over the course of the year, you know, and so we talk about things that were in the registrar, things that were programmatic, things that we do through class in terms of education, and you'll see a lot of that continue to roll out. We spend some time with our academic deans, you know, increasing the staff capacity to support the diverse student community. And I would say my door is always open to have those continued follow-up discussions, whether it's with an individual student or a group of students. We always want to have that dialogue and find out what's different from last year, what's on your mind today that wasn't on your mind. And if there are deliverables that you feel aren't moving fast enough, maybe we can escalate them at a more rapid pace.
I guess I then want to ask, what has changed since last year? What's in the works for that?
You know, I'd have to think about the very specific things. I mean, I know we, you know, we've done a lot more training with our staff, we've been spending more time talking about inclusion and diversity. I think we've, you know, increased the capacity of our staff in terms of the number of people, you know, doing work on campus. You know, I'd have to think, I know our registrar is looking at some of the issues we talked about with name, you know, identification. So there, I think there are a number of things underway. I'd have to go back to that list because it's been a few months, but again, I'd be always happy to meet.
I think we've done work with rest facilities, with the name identification. Our registrar, I think we have still, did we hire one, or we're still searching for one? And I think when that occurs, you know, we'll be able to move forward more strongly on that. And I know we've strengthened counseling overall, including in this arena. I don't know if Dr. Lawrence, you want to say anything about that at all?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I did ask Tara Schuster to reach out to you last time. She said she's emailed you a couple of times, you didn't respond. We'd love to get together with you, though. And she had a whole list of things she's talked with you before. We'd love to go over them again. So if you could contact her, that would be wonderful. But we have, in fact, added more LGBT staff. We have made all of our staff go through training, including counselors, that students rightfully pointed out to us did not have the appropriate training. But again, we'd love to work more with you, but we need you to reach out to us, too. You can't just hear about it here at these meetings. We need to meet with you in between these meetings.
Would you be willing to work with off-campus nonprofit groups on this, like Albany Pride or In Our Own Voices?
We just had them on campus, yeah. We just had them on here a week and a half ago. We just had them on campus, had a big event over at the union.
Which one?
So, I can give, I can give you the, I can't give you the exact name, but I can have Tara give you the exact name and who she had over.
Okay.
So, but yes, as a matter of fact, we work with them all the time. That's on an ongoing basis. But again, we're glad to hear any of the suggestions you have and beef that up and do more.
Okay.
And I'll have her reach out to you again.
I think there was a gentleman up here, in a red shirt.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Jackson, for taking time of your busy schedule to meet with us. I really appreciate it, giving us a chance to ask questions. So, over the summer semester, the Greek deans, all three of them, left RPI. I know it's not anyone's fault, and I understand the concept of willful employment. However, this was really disruptive for Greeks, especially like Greek leaders. Like me personally, being the president of my fraternity, I met with my Greek dean more in one semester than I did with my academic advisor, like my four years here, which I know maybe doesn't speak well on me, but I got academics figured out pretty early, and I really needed help with my fraternity, because, you know, it's different kind of problems, ones that I'm not necessarily suited to solve. So, I kind of have a three-part question, I hope you don't mind. But I was wondering if you could give any insight as to why they did leave? I know it's kind of private information, but-
We won't tell you anything about it.
Yeah, I assume so, but-
You knew that.
Yeah.
But good try.
Yeah, appreciate that. So, I know that you are currently in the hiring process, and right now you have Wendy on staff, who's fantastic, but unfortunately, from my conversations with her, she's very overwhelmed, and it's really hard for her to transition to this role.
That's true.
And she feels like she was kind of like not given much of a starting point, and maybe there wasn't anything left behind. So I'm wondering what you guys are doing to kind of support her and get more people on staff, and, you know, kind of as a corrective action. What are your plans to make sure something like this doesn't happen again?
Well, I think, let's back up. Number one, we can't guarantee that that won't happen again, because as you point out, this is not a prison, you know? People get to come and go. And I don't mean that in a pejorative way, that, so people will go and seek, you know, other positions, or their family reasons, any number of reasons people choose to leave. So, to say, to give you a guarantee that it won't happen again would be disingenuous. Now, at the same time, we're working as fast as we can and as hard as we can to hire the additional Greek deans. But there are various reasons. I mean, these folks are in high demand. Many universities are facing great challenges in their Greek systems across the country, and so people are working very hard to hire people. But in the, at the same time, so there's a lot of competition. But at the same time, because of the compendium of challenges, there are some people who may come from a broader student life background, even if they themselves were Greek, who are a little wary of taking such positions. And so all of these things play into decisions people can make. We try to sell the legacy and history of our Greek system, as well as our class model, and we think we will find the right people, but, and we think we compensate them well, but we can't guarantee that people will stay. But we will do everything we can to support them, and I think Peter has been taking some steps in the absence of having the other two Greek deans to provide other support through his broader staff to the Greek dean, so.
And if you don't mind, just really, my question is not how you prevent people from leaving, but how do you help people who are stepping into the role feel like they're not starting from scratch? Like, I don't know, there's some kind of documentation kind of thing, you keep going. I know it's not something that you can just like make standard work for.
Well, we actually do have documentation. There's a very strong orientation program when people come in and where they are walked through, what all the current issues are, what, how Rensselaer is organized, you know, how they fit into that, both in terms of their specific responsibility, as well as into the larger student life staff. Every new person, including every new Greek dean, is given a 90-day plan in terms of things they go through to specifically learn about the university, learn about current plans, learn about, you know, what, you know, some of the issues are. And so it's a very, very robust plan. So, I'm not, I have not had a chance to talk with the current Greek dean, so I don't know much about what you're saying, but I do know about how we intake new employees, particularly in positions of great responsibility. Peter, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I would say a couple of things. First of all, thank you for the question, and a couple of points. I appreciate the fact that you recognize the value that Wendy is playing on an inner basis, and it's great to hear that you guys have a strong relationship. I actually had a one-on-one with her this week to talk about the things that she's doing, and we never expect one person to take the role of three. But what I will say is I think it's a good endorsement, because we've invested in the Greek Life Commons, because we see the value of that investment. I will also say, I haven't introduced, but John Lawler's here, and just, John, why don't you stand? The Greek Life Commons reports to John, and John himself has a background with Greek Life. But one of the things that we decided to do as soon as we knew that we were going to have some gaps is we tried to bring in some other people, like John, Dr. Potts in the union, two of our Archer Center faculty members, who I'm not sure I see, but I know that they were involved, and our new director of student conduct, continue to support the Greek community, even in lieu of those full-time staff. So, that, part of that evaluation is they've got to get involved with the implementation, but we also want to make sure that they're supporting. So, each of them has been visiting chapters, they've been doing inspections, so I don't know, there are probably more specific things we can talk about, but we want to continue to have that strong engagement with our personnel across student life with the Greek Life Commons. So I appreciate the question, I also appreciate the fact that you've embraced that staff, and we want to continue to have you involved in the process of selecting the next Greek deans. You'll have a voice at the table, like we do with all of our conversations. We're doing, when we talk about the registrar and other important positions, we want to have students be engaged in those conversations, because ultimately, we work hand-in-hand with you on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Any other questions? Okay, one more.
So, regarding the incident on Tuesday, the alert that was sent out said that the incident was a traffic stop, and it was, when it was really a raid by Troy Police. So, in my opinion, calling a raid like that, a traffic stop, is unacceptable.
Yeah, but Dean, but Dean. Go on. Show your thought.
So, like, I want to know what you're going to be doing to improve communication with that.
Well, thank you for your question, and thank you for your expertise in law enforcement regarding what a traffic stop is and what it isn't, okay? That, in fact, was a traffic stop. It was a vehicle that was moving through our campus in traffic that was stopped by a law enforcement organization, Troy Police Department, and they arrested an individual that was running through our campus. So that, in fact, was a traffic stop. And in fact, there's a little lesson to you. In law enforcement, when you conduct a stop like that, it's called a traffic stop, okay? It was not a raid, okay? A raid is when you raid a location, okay? Now, there were search warrants that were being carried out somewhere in Troy that we found out later, okay? But this incident took place on our campus, was not a raid, it was a traffic stop, and we put out exactly the information that we received from the Troy Police Department, okay? Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions? I think there's a gentleman up here.
This could be the last one, thank you.
Maybe.
Thank you very much for your dedication to this, this school over the past 20 years. You helped a lot in terms of the campus, it's the facilities on campus and improving the academics that is an amazing accomplishment. But, that but word, right? I think something that's gone a little unnoticed is through lack of communication and lack of faith in terms of students having in the administration, in terms of implementing stuff like the summer arch, the Greek Life Task Force, and unannounced changes in the handbook, such as with the requirement that if you're in a suspended fraternity, you can no longer live there, even if you are a junior or a senior. So there's been a huge breakdown in trust between the administration and the alumni and the students, and I think it's in shambles. So how do you plan on addressing, to start rebuilding the trust, I guess, in the entire Rensselaer community?
Well, first of all, I'm going to push back on you about things being in a shambles, because we just had our parents weekend, and with that, we had a number of hundreds of students that we interacted with and their parents in terms of their feedback about their son and daughter's experiences here at Rensselaer. And so what they articulate is far from being a shambles. So that's number one. Number two, I do understand how difficult these changes are for the Greek system here, but in point of fact, they are about the health, safety, and well-being of our students. And we will make decisions that we know are not popular all the time, but the intent is always clear. Now, I know that many of you have been influenced by your alumni chapters and your alumni Greek organization, but the world has changed, and the laws that we live under, the implications for the students, the implications for our university, as well as the actual problems that we see. And I'm not going to sit and detail everything that has happened in every chapter here, but there have been some pretty serious things. And so communication is really a two-way street, and I have met with the alumni Greeks and have been treated very badly. But that's not going to stop me from continuing to work on behalf of trying to preserve the Greek system here, which is why we are creating the Greek Commons Fund, and I personally am contributing to it. And so the things like how things appear in the handbook, I will let, again, our general counsel and with the Greek Task Force, which was involved Greeks, both on the campus and from the national organizations, and included alumni Greeks, and John Kolbe, who is an alum himself, chaired that task force. We got input from parents and from others to generate a list of recommendations. Not everybody's going to be happy with what comes out of that, but that wasn't a rushed process, and it wasn't a process where we didn't seek and in fact get the input of many, many people. And so I'm sorry if you are unhappy with the way it is, but I also would ask you to step back and think about how, you know, you and your brothers and particularly alums comport yourselves, what happens in these houses, and what can be improved, and to work with the implementation committee to try to move things along so that we can come down on the other side of- alums comport yourselves, what happens in these houses and what can be improved, and to work with the implementation committee to try to move things along so that we can come down on the other side of the mountain and, and not keep, you know, rehashing the, the history. That while important, is not going to, to move us to a different place. I've been accused of many things. There have been things through the years that if I wanted to shut down the Greek system, I could have done, taken that step a long time ago, but I haven't. And if you don't believe it, then let's just keep working and try to come out on the other side, because that is what I'm trying to do. And so, but I will take strong issue with the idea that things are in a shambles as far as the students are concerned, with as hard as the people who are in this room work and with all the things we have put into place to try to protect all of you as well as educate you as well as we can. And so you're making an indictment, not just of me, but of a whole group of people. And that is patently unfair. Let me hear from Craig and from, about the handbook and John, from about the Greek Life Task Force.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have much to add. We can, we, we continue, I mean, some things are settled. We're not going to go back and, but if you have questions, need clarity, we're always open to talk to you about those things. But we, we look at these things very carefully. And you know, just to add a point, you say about shutting down the system. We have seen universities very recently literally shutting down their systems because of continued incidents that they have happened on their campuses. I think the president just mentioned the Penn State situation this week. So when we make these changes, we make them with a lot of thought and process, but always available to talk about clarification if people need clarification on things.
If somebody dies in our Greek system, it will be shut down and we don't want that.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. If you look at the Greek Life Task Force report, which is online, there's an appendix in there of all the meetings we had with the various constituency groups, including the IFC, Panellot Council, the Student Senate, the Faculty Senate, the Parents Council, the AIGC, the Cabinet, the Deans Council and others. It's all documented there. So I think we're very open as to what we're doing. Did everybody always agree with us? No. Will we get complete agreement on all these issues? No. But I think we took all that input as we were making our report and documented it, I think fairly well to the president and to others. So it's, it's there. So to say that we didn't talk to people, and by the way, I was personally in most of those meetings, I, I know that's just patently not true.
Further questions? This will be the last one, the young lady in the check shirt.
Hi. When does the Health Center anticipate filling their staff, specifically the psychiatrist role, so that students can be diagnosed and prescribed medicine in a timely manner? And what's being done to make up now for those students who might not be receiving care as easily or quickly as they otherwise would be?
Dr. Lawrence.
So, is this on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that's a great question. We're probably a month and a half away from choosing a psychiatrist. That's, I suppose in the worst-case scenario, two months away from choosing a psychiatrist. I wish Mr. Powell was here, Vice President Powell, he could give us a more specific date. But that's going well. The recruitment is going well. We were surprised with our psychiatrist's retirement last year. And sometimes that happens, right? People have the, the right to retire when they want to. But then we want to get the right person in. We want to get someone in who's going to have a personality that they can, you know, I particularly want someone who's going to be able to draw our students out, have a very bubbly personality, as well as be really qualified. Going back to your question about can you get medicines in a timely fashion, I'd like to hear if you're not, or if some student is not. Over 80% of all psychotropics are prescribed by general practitioners in the United States. A lot of people are surprised to hear that. They think that they're all prescribed by a psychiatrist. We have a relative shortage of psychiatrists in the United States. Therefore, most cases of anxiety and depression are treated by general practitioners, internal medicine, family practitioners, pediatricians even. And they can, they can do a fine job with prescribing those medicines for uncomplicated cases of anxiety and depression. So what's happening right now in Student Health Services is that if you can't get in to see our psychiatric nurse practitioner, who we've hired to fill in on an interim basis until we hire the next psychiatrist, you'll be referred downstairs to see one of the physicians, myself or Dr. Farley. If they feel it's urgent, it's the same day. So I, same day, I think is pretty good. We can't, I can't promise we always get somebody in the same day. If it's on a Sunday, we may not get you in till Monday. But if you ask if it's an emergency, we'll get you in. We'll talk about prescribing that medicine. Now, if it's above, like, so for instance, let's say it's a complicated case, we need to get it out to a psychiatrist. We will speak to a psychiatrist, try to make a change and then get the students referred to a psychiatrist. But, so there shouldn't be a lag. I'd, I'd be disappointed to hear that there isn't. I'd love to talk to people if they feel there has been.
Thank all of you and thank you for your questions.